Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for being present. Our first meeting in 2015, and we wish for each one of you a blessed year. At this time, we will call to order our January 5th, 2015 meeting. We have our invocation by Reverend Christopher Reed, Pastor Preston Chapel, AMH Church. Come to the podium, Reverend.
Good evening. Good evening. Shalom, I bow shall pray. Heavenly Father, as once again that we come to your glory and grace. Thank you, God, for this day. Thank you, God, for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us this day. Thank you, God, for protection. Thank you, God, for traveling, grace and mercy as we travel on this day. Most of all, God, we thank you, God, for just another day to be able to be alive, to be able to walk the streets, and to be able to see the beautiful things that you have before us. Pray, oh God, as we start this new year, that you will continue to be with your people, continue to be with the council members. Watch over them, God, continue to watch over this city of Union Springs. God, send the blessings that you know that they're in need of. Bless the citizens of this city. Continue to watch over them, God, protect them, God, and most of all, God, be able to let them know who you are and what you're able to do in their lives. We ask, oh Heavenly Father, that you will be able to conduct this meeting in the way that it should go. More than any than God, let us be able to know who you are and how you have blessed us. Let us be thankful for how you brought us into a new year. We pray this, we ask this, in the bachelor's name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Let us thank for the praise. I pray that it is through the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, round clerk.
Roll call. Mayor Seacey Thomas Dunham.
Present.
Councilman Robert Shaw.
Present.
Councilwoman Deborah Hixman Ryan.
Present.
Councilman Jay Earl Hudson.
Present.
Councilman Brian Adman.
Present.
Councilman Stan Toots.
Let the record show that we have one council member out there, and we still have a four, and we will proceed. We have item number six to be added to the agenda before we adopt it. Is that the Express Lounge and Grill? Are you adding the item number six to your agenda, please? Number five, number six. All right.
Make a motion when we adopt the agenda as presented plus the addition.
A motion.
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. We need to approve our public hearing minutes of weed abatement, item 2014-2 of December 15, 2014. Need a motion to that effect. In motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Need a motion to approve our regular council meeting of December 15, 2014. In motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Oh, business. Since we have our engineer here, we're gonna have him to come to the podium and go over this right quick with us. We have a change order and a final approval for our paving project, number 14-0387. Tim Simpson.
Mayor, Council, appreciate it. Glad to be here tonight. Again, just want to let the public know that we're in the final stages. The contractor is on board today, and he's got everything laid out on the streets. He'll be here Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, hopefully wrapping up, so that the streets will have a thermoplastic permanent seal down. It'll be beautified, and everything will be good. I'd like to thank the police chief and for all his officers who've helped us tremendously to control traffic. We do ask for one other, you know, two more days so that we can get that done. So that will be done, like I said, this week, and the contract will be out of here. But what this change order is about in front of you is to do the complete project. When we really got through it, when we got through with it, we actually had savings, and we were able to pass the savings from one street to the other where we did Kaneka. And we also were able to change the paint striping from regular paint to thermoplastic, which lasts about 10 to 15 years longer. So we're excited about that. We still are very close. I think we only had like a 2% increase overall, which is way below the 10% state level. So we are in great shape there.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Simpson? All right, and need a motion to approve.
A motion.
In motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. New business, public assembly request, Pilkferl has requested a breast council walk on Saturday, October the 17th, 2015. And they have cleared with the chief that they are right, and he's given okay to move forward. I need a motion to approve. In motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item number two, promotion. It is recommended that Henry Thrasher be promoted to Assistant Supervisor of the District Department, and a clearance from the ward to supervise the inmate to go along with that, and be on probation for three months, and increase in salary to $13 an hour. In motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Want to congratulate you, Mr. Thrasher.
Thank you.
You're looking for great things out of you. Let's stand up, let everybody see you, as Henry Thrasher just got promoted. Thanks very much. Item number three, accept the resignation of Union Springsville County Recreation Department Office Manager, LaShante Cooper. Need a motion to that effect.
Some move.
In motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Now we need to advertise for office manager for full-time for the Recreation Department for two weeks or until the position is filled.
Some move.
In motion?
Second.
And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Interim office manager, we honor the emergency, there is a need for a part-time emergency office worker. And we have an individual that works with the Recreation Department, part-time now. He will be part-time as a regular office worker, which will replace LaShante. And the other position will be his regular part-time position that he has already. He's gonna be full-time office worker. He will not do the other at all.
It would be both, then you would have to be full, because he can't work for 20 hours.
What I'm saying, we're gonna bring him, we're gonna bring him full-time, but he's gonna be working, doing both jobs.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And it's recommended that his salary goes up to $9 an hour for the both jobs. Okay?
You got a question?
Yes.
So you're saying that you're gonna...
John, his name is John.
John King.
John King. Okay. Now, what was your question? All right. John King. He's already, now, he's not gonna, he does not want this position full-time. That's what my understanding is. He wants to help us out until we find somebody to fill this office manager position, and he willing to take it. And then he'll revert back to his regular position after we find somebody else. All right?
Yes.
All right? Any other questions? I need a motion to that effect.
A motion.
In motion? And who's second? All right. And second. Any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, item number six. I would like for someone from the Express Lounge and Grill, the owners, that they will come to the podium at this time. I would certainly appreciate it. If they are not here, we'll lose. It has been brought to our attention, several issues have been going on with the Grill and the lounge down on Kaneka. And after discovery today, we found out that you do not have a license from the ABC Board to sell liquor.
We're not selling it right now. We just had a few points.
Have what?
We had a few points, like, other things that were stopping us from all getting the license. We had to install a sprinkler system. It cost like $37,000. And it didn't install it up. They should be doing like it. Everything, we have our city license, everything else. But we had been saying, alcohol just had a couple points.
Okay. Was alcohol involved in this party?
Yes.
The question is, was alcohol sold at the car?
No, it wasn't sold. They would say you pay to get in.
Well... Any questions from the council?
I'm not sure how that sold was used. Where'd they get the alcohol?
The people that had parties, they had to bring their own. If they wanted to give away free alcohol or free beer, whatever it was, they wanted to give away, they had to bring with them. And we only covered with security.
How many of these parties have you all had?
Eight, six, seven, eight.
It was two for bikes giving, two for vehicles, and two for...
So are we addressing them not having a license? What's the issue? Because, you know, this is all...
Well, there was a, an incident that took place this weekend down at that club. There was some shooting that took place. There were some injuries that took place. There were some children that were not adults that was clear to go inside of the club and was supposed to be of age to go inside, where alcohol was being quote "sold."
And so, how did you know that?
Because the community has come in and brought that information to us. And they have the document to show where they got the stamp.
The parents have the document to show, and the parents were all here today.
And that's why it came up for us to investigate a little bit closer of what was going on down there. And we checked with the ABC Board, there is no license down there.
And so, so you don't have a license to be...
To sell alcohol. Because after you guys approved everything, they told us, once the state fire marshal came in, he told us that, you know, they had to bring the building up to code, and had the sprinkler involved. So that was the only holdup, like, once they get through with the sprinkler system. But he should've said sometime this week, then the fire marshal, all he had to do was come in down and seize that they installed and tell their city board and get there to issue a license.
What do you think the best thing would be, just to stop these businesses?
Yeah.
And also, security check, ID from everyone, play even allowed to come in. So I don't know if this child had maybe his older brother or someone that resembled him, ID or something, the reason why he got in. I'm not sure, because we didn't know nothing on the age kids. It's totally prohibited. Signed on the outside with the club establishment room. And the first thing was that ID, the street enforcement, they wasn't like to give it.
Where are you all in the sprinkler system with? What's the hazard?
We waiting on the CD to come tap into their water supply, because all the lines and the other things are up inside the building. We went on to tap into their water supply, because they had to order apart. And when that comes through, and another fire alarm system comes in, and write how many people the building hold and occupied, then they're through with that.
How much, how much have you all invested in that?
It was like total with the CD, the fire alarm, and the customers, like $30,000.
You all are the best at $30,000?
It's gonna be like $40,000.
Even more than that, because we are actually purchasing all the builders on that block. That paperwork's supposed to action February, but we hadn't exactly got with them on the price that we're willing to give them, because they want $125,000 for that whole block. But we really don't see that it's worth it, but we hadn't got to that point yet.
Let me ask this question. All this went on this past week, the shooting, the outside shooting, and the B-line and everywhere else, and you don't have a license to actually sell alcohol?
No, not to sell alcohol.
What will it be like once you get a license to sell alcohol? I mean, the whole town might explode.
Yeah, but we're actually not done with the whole facility, because it'd be supposed to be like having a kitchen and all these things as well.
And actually, that night that all that went on, it was several more parties in the city. And the people that were outside causing our complaints, they didn't even come and offer sympathy out. They probably were somewhere else to put it over with the alcohol.
If you have a license to do business, though, you're in charge of the outside too, not just the inside. You're in charge of your parking lot. Whatever went on in your parking lot is still your responsibility.
It was across the street.
But the people that were, that were across the street were attending your establishment.
No, they were, from previous, they were not allowed on our property, because they had studied construction before. So we let them know that they couldn't come back, because they were calling the big problem. So they never came over there. They was across the street.
Okay. Second thing, did you all make an effort to go to the police department and sign a trespassing warrant against them?
See, we didn't know the complete stuff. We thought it was okay for us to let them know that they couldn't come back.
You would've better protected yourself had you gone to the police station and put the paperwork in place for future references.
I would suggest still don't spend so much time on it. Let's make a motion for them to cease business until they get their proper paperwork together. Throw them back to their country.
A motion, is that a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion to ask them to suspend business until they get their paperwork together, and come back and get their license.
Suspend business or the license or...
I don't want to suspend the license.
Have you suspended business license?
We don't want to suspend the business license.
Business license?
You said what, councilman?
We would only have the authority to suspend or permit a business license. We'd only have authority. I think we have it. Hope from their operation.
So what would proceed to be?
Make a motion to suspend their business license.
And then once they get their paperwork together?
Until they satisfy the council that it's gonna be running, it should.
I don't want to agree with that, what you're saying. Until, until they get their stuff together, because this is just the first strike. He has $90,000, so how much money he has invested, if he can prove that, that's good, they come to the city, to our area. You don't want to just suspend it.
Well, I think he said the same thing you said, until they get the business in the line that the council is satisfied with.
But the amount they have spent is not really the question, that's what we're trying to do. What we have to try to do is protect the public. And what they have spent has nothing to do with the city council or the city. Our job is to protect the people of Union Springs.
And I understand that, just be reasonable. This was just from what I was, at 6 o'clock, I didn't know the full story of what's going on, so I'm trying to get a feel, whatever the council feels is appropriate.
Well, let me say this. This, this has been going on since that club didn't exist now. Well, they say it's not a club now, but since they've been down there, it's been some issue going on. I've had individuals come to me and complain about activity down there, guns going on, people being attacked, and all that kind of stuff. I just had, and I didn't know that it was in certain disarray until I began to study researching it today with the ABC Board. And they have just not issued a license. Because of the complaints that they've been getting.
I'm gonna make a motion that their license be suspended, that the city council is satisfied with their ability, and back into business.
A second. A motion?
Question?
And second. All right, question?
Can you, can you, can you, can you, can you explain what you mean by say that we are satisfied? What does that mean?
So the council agrees to let them have their business license back. Somebody's gonna have to make a motion to get the business license back.
When they decide that they want to come back to the council, they have the right to come back, to present their plans and what they're doing. And then the council will vote again.
I understand.
All right. In motion and second.
And we will receive our recommendation. Police chief, the chief of the police department, what to do about it.
Yes, for sure. In motion and second. Any other question? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a following motion, that the police chief prepare a report for all this that has occurred down there, and to investigate any other claims that have been made, to be verified. There's a motion.
That's a motion and second. Any questions?
Repeat the motion, council? I can't hear you.
The motion is to have the police chief prepare a report for all instances that have occurred down there since they've been in business, and present that to the council.
I have a question.
All right, wait a minute. Hold it just a minute, ma'am. This is motion and a second on this floor. Any council members have any questions? All in favor, use the word aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, what's your question?
So basically, you're saying that the business license is suspended until we come in front of you guys and say you have plans on the business?
Well, you already have a plan in place, in the direction you're going. When you've completed all of that, and you've cleared all of these complaints, and as for the chief, is what he's gonna find out, then you have to bring, present this back to this council, and we'll consider that on the basis of your presentation.
So we have to go to the chief of the list of every complaint?
He's gonna provide that for us, and we'll give it to you. When we get his, we'll forward it on to you.
Basically, we're just saying, get your paperwork together, bring it back. Once you bring it back, then we'll go on with what you had, what you all specified, and give you, give you a chance to make up.
Exactly.
And then, I like the same, the people that have been causing all the problems, I mean, they're like the people that have been causing problems the whole time, but like the last time, you know, I know all personally, the same deal. Because we didn't let them come in, and so they went across the road, and waited on the other guys to come out to jump out. Because all of them were smaller than me, and I just...
Okay. Report all that to the chief, and he'll look into it. Okay. Thank y'all very much. All right. Did a report?
Finance?
No report this week, ma'am.
Police?
Ma'am, you didn't have anything to say in your report?
Always gotta be excited. I'll give it up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ryan, put on a report.
I'll do my report, but I'll wait on you.
Oh, you have a fire?
Oh, you have a fire? Oh, I thought you said you had a fire. Y'all gotta be excited.
First of all, the city council has a stat on, on the activities for the police department for the month of December. I just also want to add that we signed eight felony warrants, seven misdemeanor warrants. One of my officers who was struck by a car, Officer Corporal Charles May, he's scheduled for surgery on Wednesday, January the 7th, 10:45 a.m. in Montgomery. I got so many times that the police department get complaints and get the short end of the stick. But I got some good news for one of my officer, Corporal Williams, come up for me. It's, we, we, on our job every day, we face different, different situations, and we never know what, what the next call is gonna be. Well, on early morning, January the 1st, at approximately 1:30 a.m., a driver break flakered, and a female passenger was traveling west on Highway 82. When he lost control of his vehicle, he collided into a tree. Corporal Tyrone Williams here responded to the scene and discovered that the vehicle was on fire, and both occupants was trapped inside of the vehicle. Without hesitation, Corporal Williams immediately used his baton to open the sunroof of the vehicle and pulled the female passenger out of the vehicle to save her. Corporal Williams then pulled the driver, who appears to have, to have been killed on impact from the vehicle. Corporal Williams put his life in harm's way to serve, to save the life of others, and to save the family from further grief. In my opinion, Corporal Williams is a hero, and he deserves a lifesaving award. This is the new thing, it was, it was recommended by our mayor. We got, we have a distinction service award that has Corporal, this is to acknowledge that Corporal Tyrone Williams has earned the lifesaving award, and presented on this day, fifth day of January 2010. Congratulations. Also, we have a lifesaving ribbon that will be worn on his uniform to, to let people know that he has earned that award. And we have, we have a pin also that's been, that's been made. Also, his, Corporal Williams is gonna be presented with Officer of the Month. This is the third award that we've given out for Officer of the Month since we've been giving this award out. Officer of the Month. And along with that, we, myself and supervisor, we pitch in a couple dollars and get them a gift card, $50 gift card out to Red Lobster. So, well deserved, and you earned that, I think.
I stand to salute you for what you do to, for our community. It is something to say when one goes over beyond the call of duty, and this is an example of what you have done. We thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for the example you've set for the other officers that coming behind you, because that's the only way they're gonna learn. You're not doing that for a show. You're doing your duty, to try to help somebody else, and this is what it's all about, trying to help somebody else. Thank you, Corporal, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to get activities of Martha Lisa, but it's being funded by the Fire Department. As you know, we have five real on the first and third ones at 6:00 p.m. On the first of December, we have a grass fire on County Road 22. On the 7th of December, we have a pool fight at Dollar General. On the 3rd of December, we're burning a house on Highway 29 South. Fourth of December, we had a grass fight in the Palmero Street area. On the 4th of December, we have a stove fight, 504 block terrace. On the 11th of December, we have a grass fire on Harper Street. 13th of December, we had a house fire, 82 West. 13th, on the 13th of December, we had a house fire on Holton Avenue. On the 18th of December, we had a motor vehicle accident, and we had to take the rescue truck out and the fire truck on Highway 223. And the 26th of December, we had a house fire on County Road 148, love of our fires, and now a bill of RCS account. For December, we had 49 and tried to cause, we had 48 911 calls, which made a total of 97, transported 84, 13 no-holes. They took 44 to pull out kind of house code, 10 to the nursing home, from the nursing home. That's...
Uh, Baptist Medical Center South took seventeen patients there, took seven to Jackson Hospital, two to U A D in Birmingham, two to East Baptist Medical Center East. And one to East Alabama Medical Center and one to the helicopter. And wheelchair reports, we did a total of hundred and seventy-eight wheelchair rooms, eighty-nine was took dialysis and eighty-nine patient prior to restlessness. That's included for December.
Is this an unusual month, a hundred and something wheelchair?
Yeah, you do that wheelchair, but your wheelchair will lose its calls unless when you start.
All right, crime stoppers?
Crime stopper telephone number is eight five zero eight five three seven. We are there to give assistance to police department and the sheriff's department. When people do not feel totally comfortable in calling them direct, the crime stoppers ask that citizens call the sheriff and call the police chief first. But if you want to remain anonymous and the possibility of getting a cash reward, you can call this number and we'll be glad to pass the information on to the proper authorities. And I attended a meeting last month that helps them plant and cook, you do for the local businesses, that was a very informative meeting. And there's a lot of good ideas that you can develop to help the community and the businesses from that in preventing crime. And I gave a book to the crime launch for businesses to the chief and Mr. Lewis paid for the other one, A G. And I'm asking crime stoppers to buy a hundred of those books. And if you would like, we will work with you and the chief going to the businesses and giving them the little booklets. If, the book is very concise as to what to do in cases of robbery, bad checks, shoplifting and how to protect your employees instance. About sixteen pages, it's an excellent book that we would like to help you with that.
No problem, I'll be ready.
Okay.
Street cemetery, San Pedro. No report, tourism promotion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, just a couple things to report on behalf of tourism, um, the first couple of weekends in December, we had a, a great performance of Patsy Cline at the theater. We, um, really appreciated everyone's support for that. We, um, estimate that we had over eight hundred folks in the theater during those six shows that we did. And of those over eight hundred, over five hundred of those were visitors to Union Springs and Bullock County that lived outside of the county. So that brought in, um, a good number of tourists for us for, um, the month of December. And also of this guest, um, because Patsy Cline is such a popular show, we had a hundred and seventeen new guests that came to the Red Door Theater who had never been before. So we were excited to expose Union Springs and Bullock County to, to folks who might not have come here otherwise. We have cast for our next production, which is The Southern Exposure, which will run the weekends of February twelfth through the fourteenth. And then February twenty-first and twenty-second, if you're looking for a, a Valentine's event to do, that'll be on Saturday, February fourteenth, that'll be a good outing for you to do. And those rehearsals actually started tonight up at the theater for that. Uh, and then we are working on next month in February, the two national field tournaments will be held in the county as well. The National Open Shooting Dog Championship and the National Amateur Free For All. So we'll be working with, um, that, great to do a little promotions for that, and that's all I have for tonight.
Very much.
Thank you.
Stalker preservation.
Historical preservation report is about a certificate given to Ms. Leola Cobb. It reads, American Legion Auxiliary Honorary Life Member Certificate. The honor of life membership is gratefully presented to Leola Cobb for sixty years of service. In recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding loyalty and dedication to this organization. This honor recognizes the commitment demonstrated towards the program, activities and ideals of the American Legion Auxiliary dedicated to God and country. Presented by Belle Cook Hobson Unit Number Three Three Seven, Union Springs, Alabama, this twenty-eighth day of November, two thousand and fourteen. And Ms. Cobb is the chaplain of this auxiliary. It was organized under the American Legion post, Belle Cook Hobson. Belle Cook Hobson are deceased veterans. And the American Legion Auxiliary was organized on May twenty-second, nineteen fifty-three, oh, that's when the charter was granted. And in its history, the charter members were Ulyss Turner, Lily P. Graves, Annie L. Smith, Ruth Nance, Willie P. Allen, Lilian Banks, Marie Davis, S and B. Cooks, Ada Hunter and LaCrucial Lee. The current president is Ruby Swanson, and she also has the honor of being the president of the District Thirty-two. That includes Montgomery, Prattville, Tuskegee, Millbrook and Union Springs. And on the thirty-first day of January, they will host at the Richard B. Stone Building, an information seminar for veterans and their military families. The American Legion Auxiliary serves veterans, their families and their communities. Uh, there are also benefits for being a member, discounts for prescriptions, insurance, car rentals and many benefits like that just for being a member. It's a, um, the largest patriotic women's organization in the world. Uh, the members know the definition of patriotism and what it means to be a responsible citizen, there are over nine hundred thousand members. We understand the value of community service and know firsthand that our freedoms don't come without a price. We have a passion for making the lives of our veterans and military families easier. Some of the things that this auxiliary participates in are celebrating our heroes through Operation Welcome Troops Home events. Enhancing care provided by VA hospitals and medical centers. Lobbying for our veterans. Providing educational opportunities for our young people through scholarships, grants and Girls State and Girls Nation. Providing income for the veterans who make poppies. Supporting schools and bringing veterans into the classroom and sharing our patriotic pride with the next generation. Um, on November the eleventh, when we have our Veterans Day program, these ladies are dressed in their blue uniforms and are there to serve the freshmen as we honor our local veterans. And so, we congratulate Ms. Leola Cobb for her sixty years of service in this great organization. And after all I've heard tonight, I'm just so proud of Union Springs and Bullock County.
Thank you. Okay, exchange of services, Mr. Taylor, not here, tree committee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On December the tenth, two thousand and fourteen, the tree committee met at City Hall to discuss the tree removal of the five trees in front of the courthouse. Um, the, the plan was to try to get it done as soon as possible, we're gonna wait till the striking is done on the roadway before we start on that project. And we chose to go with the boxwood to replace that area. And also, we just, uh, was brought to my attention, uh, two trees in front of the library need to be removed because maids are following. We don't want the citizen to be walking by the library with a tree, a library to the city, so we're gonna get those removed as well, um, as soon as the striking is done. And also, we have, uh, few more trees down in the park in, uh, the Good Time Community, um, we will be moving more trees down there as well.
Thank you, sir. Commercial and development, please.
I would just like to say thank you to everyone who came out to our commerce meeting, uh, last month. Thank you, man, for being attendance and giving your suggestions and input, thank the chief, thank the mayor, him who came to do, uh, what we had to do to address the issue we had in the city. Uh, I also got a chance to go to the industry, uh, to the development authority meeting today and they're pushing, trying to get new businesses here. So I just suggested or assume to get behind them to help, get where we can to promote our community.
Thank you, sir. Chamber of Commerce, American Chamber, Recreation Park, Special Event.
Good evening and happy new year. Um, we have gone on Area Ten Basketball Game in Tuskegee. Um, the location will be George Washington Collar Elementary School in Tuskegee housing and housing. And I have some schedules here, if you would like to, um, come to the game or want to know more about, uh, the times. Um, the Recreation Center, uh, will be looking for cheer coaches for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen cheer season. If you're interested, please give me a call at three three four four seven three nine six five one, or you can call the office at seven three eight eight five two zero. Um, baseball season is starting and I wanna get a head start, so anyone that wants to be a baseball coach or a softball coach, the same things apply. Um, our board meeting will be January the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen at five thirty PM, anyone is welcome to come or join the board. If you wanna volunteer, I'm always available.
We're gonna have to reschedule the January meeting, because they're four, the council meeting.
January twenty?
January twenty.
I would take into consideration. And on behalf of the Recreation Center, I'd like to apologize for our equipment not properly working. Uh, we're in the process of trying to upgrade and to make the weight room and cardio room more efficient for our members, so please accept my apologies, that's all I have.
Have a plan in place to get things back up to stuff, of course?
Yes, uh, I'll have the information at the next agenda setting to be ready for the council meeting.
Thank you. All right, we have someone here from the library board, uh, Ms. Gabby Field, come on down. Thank you, good heavens, we're here tonight.
Um, let's see, I just wanted to come and represent the library, um, remind everybody that we are open Monday through Friday, eleven to five. Um, we have several services, um. We do now, um, have colored copies, uh, for a dollar a page to anybody that needs to make colored copies. I know we've had a few questions about that, um. Typically, it's just black and white, but we have, we do now have colored. Let's see, we'll have our annual summer reading program, the month of June, only the first day is June second. We'll hold it, um, Mondays and Wednesdays during the month of June. So that's open for ages three to eighteen, we really love it when, you know, teenagers sign up, so we're gonna order children.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming, looking forward to the first month and next month. The maids report, we wanna thank Reverend Reed, councilor, uh, Preston Chapel, you and me church for bringing our prayer, uh, for our council meeting this afternoon. We appreciate and we appreciate the time you spent with us during the day. And I think we had a very active, uh, day, uh, today, and I don't know if you, decide you'll do it again or not, but we love to have you at any time. We want, we had at our hundred and forty-first maids' breakfast at Preston Chapel this morning, over thirty-seven people in attendance. We wanna thank Preston Chapel again for allowing us to come and serving us a delicious breakfast, breakfast. Our hundred and forty-second maids' breakfast will be at Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church, Twenty-Six Brown Street. Our next council meeting will be January the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, at six o'clock PM here in this chamber. And on our agenda will, for this meeting will be January thirteenth at nine o'clock at City Hall. The City Hall will be closed on the nineteenth in observing Omar Luther King's birthday of night, nineteenth of January. Uh, City Hall will be closed. Other announcements from council member? None here. Council? No more, okay? Uh, approval bill over a thousand dollars, Attorney Lewis Smith, uh, one thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars, a motion to approve. So move. Been motion? Second and second, any questions? All if they use the word aye? Aye. Any opposed? None, the need of approval to approve all other bills at the property audit. The move. It been motion? Second. And second, any questions? All if they use the word aye? Aye. Any opposed? None. All announcements have been called for, are there any public service announcements from the audience? Public service, that being none, I need a motion to adjourn. Been motion? Second. Second. All if they use the word aye? Aye. All right, I know it's not opposed.
And not what?
Opposed. Are you opposed? You be everybody's sir.